I would like to start out the meeting by saying I apologize for not letting the email go out to the whole district. For the personnel meeting at five, Bob and I were at the lake near Nada Wash. We don't get internet at all until you hit Bob and that type of stuff. And that's when I looked at the email stating that Brian would like to postpone it. With his lung issues and stuff, it's really tough. So he was waiting to hear back from me. So as soon as he heard back from me, he let the other board members know. And again, we're sorry that it didn't go out to the full school district. And that will be a change, and we'll make that change next time. So we're human, and we're sorry, and I just needed a day off, and so, okay. So, sorry. All right, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Nope, okay. All right, here are no changes to the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Public comments?
Nope.
Thank you guys for coming back. Moving on to 6.1, John.
Okay. I just want to take a few minutes. I know it's summer and it's, people got better places to be than here. But I want to talk just a couple different things from an operations perspective. And then also a potential, maybe awareness perspective on a tool that we could use for our curriculum. And this summer, like last summers were busy, but probably out of the two or three more significant projects, more maybe public-facing projects, we swapped out our copiers. So our copiers that we've had for the last five years, at least that it had expired. We had some discussion through the tech committee on kind of what we want to look for for different services and functions. The group, for the most part, said, yep, we want something reliable. I totally get it. We looked at a couple different solutions. We had three vendors that applied for it, but I shared some studies on reliability from, I think, a Consumer Report for a copier piece. We went through that. And long story short, we got the new equipment in. Similar look and feel as our existing equipment that we had. So I don't think it'll be a big training or a big learning curve for staff. I expect it'll be more reliable the first few years because it's new equipment. But as I shared with the tech committee, we're still going to have some jams. We're going to have, you know, the humidity. You know, we are going to have, you know, occasional work that needs to be done. But it should be a better experience than what we've had the last few years with the existing copiers. We have also swapped out a handful of student devices. Our last year seniors and eighth graders, they were on the schedule to refresh their devices. So after this period, we now have like three through 12, all the students have Chromebooks. The last year seniors and eighth grade device, we have cleaned them up as much as we can. We put a newer Windows image on it. And we kind of designed them for, they're going to be repurposed in the primary grades, but also additional checkout devices. So that equipment, we made them so they can do an auto log-on. So the little kids don't need to put in usernames or passwords. We can kind of set up some initial tabs to make that as user-friendly as we can for the younger kids, but also get, you know, some additional miles of that equipment without any additional hard expense. And the last one is probably doing a refresh on our website. We are running the new website on the new Google platform. The platform that we had previously is going to expire within the next 12 months. Google says they're going away from that platform, moving to this one. So I wanted to be in front of that. I work with the tech committee, and I got to give them a ton of credit. I shared with the group, when it comes to like the data and the operations and the technical piece, I'm confident in that area. But to make it something maybe a little more marketable, or I said, make it look pretty, I got a lot of good feedback from the group. And it was, I got legit sincere feedback from all four sites. So I am happy on where that site is now. And I'm optimistic as we keep moving forward, I shared with the group and shared with office staff, less is more. Meaning if we're going to keep it updated, the links and content, that's great. But if it's something that, you know, is outdated or doesn't need to be on there, let's get it off the website. So I'm happy where that's going. The last thing I want to do is just take a minute and show, and I apologize if I'm going to maybe get some projector light in front of a couple of you. At our last tech committee meeting, we looked at a solution called CK-12. And what CK-12 is, it's a nonprofit that started out in California during the peak of the recession. That state said, let's find different ways to save money with their schools. So instead of buying money with the Hoot and Mifflin's, the McGraw Hills, they essentially said, you know what, we can write our curriculum ourselves. So they have 10,000 math teachers, 10,000 science teachers, whatever it might be. So they started and built a web-based curriculum tool that will actually allow, and bear with me here as I find the signal. What it does, it's a web-based solution that allows schools like DGF to either use existing curriculum that somebody else had already built, or we can design our own. And I will cast here. So this is just an example of, I'm logged in CK-12, the website. This works on Chromebooks, this works on iPads, it works on Windows device. It's a device agnostic solution. That's important to me because the reality is devices are going to come and go. But as we spend time and money on building, enhancing the curriculum, we shouldn't need to reinvent the wheel just because we got a different device, you know, every three years. And I'm logged in with my account. And what I just did is I created a couple of classes. So we got a DGF Biology, and I created a DGF Algebra. And under the DGF Biology, I had a couple of assignments, and I added Andy Cox and Andrew Melvin as a couple of students. And what was discussed at our last tech committee meeting is, I have the opinion, DGF, like a lot of schools, could probably look at more digital curriculum. Look at more digital curriculum as an option. I'll be the first one to say I'm not recommending or promoting one product over the other. But I think there's still a disconnect when people think, yep, it's time to review my curriculum, whatever the subject is, that if it's on the computer or device, it's still sometimes perceived as, oh, that's a technology issue, or that's, you know, something else. And that's not the case. You know, CK-12 is not, this isn't a pie in the sky solution. CK-12's been around for at least, you know, seven, eight, you know, plus years. And each year, they keep getting better with their products. So within this biology class, I have, they called Flex Books. And I'll just, again, just take a quick minute. I'm going to open up a Flex Book. And this is a biology concepts. This is what another school had created for their biology class. Looks very similar to your, probably a traditional biology book. You got the traditional text, but you also got, you know, if there's activities or lessons, that's baked into it. And you got YouTube videos. You can take, you can essentially cherry pick what other schools have done. But if we want to encompass something that's unique to DGF, we have that flexibility. Let's see here. The other thing that I like about this tool is it's aligned to different standards. So in this case, we have standards with NSES, but we can find different things specific to Minnesota. So if we have units with Minnesota standards, we can literally do a search on that and find that particular lesson. Anoka Henepin is using, I don't know if it's all their math curriculum, but maybe at the high school, they are using CK-12 themselves at their district. So what I asked the tech committee, you know, group, is, what's Anoka Henepin doing that's any different than what, you know, DGF is? And again, I said, I don't want this necessarily to be a push saying, hey, we need to use CK-12 or other digital solutions. But I think we really need to take a more in-depth look on, all right, if we didn't want to use any, you know, build any of your own curriculum, we can literally grab Anoka Henepin's probability and statistics, and it's already aligned to, you know, state standards. It doesn't cost a district, it doesn't cost us anything. We just need to get more comfortable in being aware of, this is a tool that's out there for staff to use. So good discussion at the last tech committee, when and how do we bring that awareness, you know, to the masses? And then we already got a handful of teachers at each site, says, yep. Can we just try out a unit this upcoming year on something that you don't like? You know, your existing publisher, if there's a unit we can try. Andy and myself, we can do a lot of the front-loading. Our goal is really just to have people more aware of solutions like this that are out there so that when we do choose a curriculum moving forward, that we've done our due diligence and made sure we looked at all possible avenues. With that being said, that is my fast and furious operations, but yet also some curriculum options as well.
Thanks, John.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to 6.2, Board Committee Reports. We had policy.
Yep, we had policy last Tuesday night. Tonight, we are going to be taking a look at the first readings of Policy 102, 205, 206, 211, 303, 401, 404, 405, and 406. All of these have changes due to legislative, new wording from 2018. The only two that we have read our first reading, but we have not done a second reading on, are 902 and 905.5. And those are two policies coming out of Community Ed. And they were meeting on, I believe, on Wednesday night, waiting on approval from the Community Ed Advisory Council. And then we'll come back to policy and review those for a second reading. If you notice, some people know that 206 is public comments at a meeting. Public participation at a school board meeting, complaints about persons at a school board meeting, or data privacy considerations. That does have addendums A and B, but there are no changes, therefore not presented this evening. So that's it from policy.
All right, was there any other committee? Just one more.
Yep.
Brian was going to, and moving on to 6.3, Brian will be doing just a short synopsis of his report. His lungs are really giving him an issue, so he is going to make a condensed. And then he will explain the other things further when we get into the long-term facility maintenance. Okay? All right.
So the retreat, professional development-wise, things that have been moving forward pretty well. We have the retreat set up for the ninth and the 10th, starting out in the morning. Working on, we've got a number of breakouts that we'll be looking at. We have strategic planning, laying that out for the whole year. We've got, and we've got Dr. Hill coming in to lead that. He's the one that's been working with our admin team. We have reviewing of the district, the district goals, site goals, and the admin goals. That'll be another one of those breakout pieces. We want to do that before we get into any negotiations, so we'll have time for that. Go through that. We've got referendum planning, Constock, Personnel and JLG Personnel. That'll be Friday morning. So I'm working with Dr. Hill on putting that draft together on what sessions make the most, make the most sense to do when during that timeline. We've got room set up. So tonight, when we get done, if you can let me know whether, who's staying so that I can lock in the room reservations tomorrow. Because I have a meeting with them tomorrow to get all the meeting rooms, everything lined up for that. We have quarterly work sessions planned, and we'll go through all of that with the school board. So Dr. Hill will be coming up at different times. What we talked about today was the idea of hitting one before we get into the fall vote. And then waiting until maybe the leadership conference down in the Twin Cities, because we've got a perfect retreat time right there to do the next session. And then we can hit two more of them in the spring with the school board when we have meeting dates. So we'd have three work sessions right on-site here. And then what the admin team will be doing with Dr. Hill is doing the same thing, most likely the next morning. So we have a work session at night with the board. And then it works much better to have those admin sessions in the morning. Trying to do those at the end of a school day when you've got, that doesn't work well. I mean, you've got everything that happens at the end of a school day. So we'll do those typically nine to 11, 11:30. So we're working out all the timelines for the year, locking it in to existing board meeting dates. He knows that we do the second and the fourth Mondays of the month. So we're trying to get that, and we'll have it all ready for the retreat. So we've got that. We have an update on the Capitol. We have a contract scheduled with MS, asked for to get that parking lot done as far as all those holes over on the south side of the high school. The cabinets have been, they've been putting those in over at the elementary at Clinton. It sounds like they're going to be wrapping up with that this week. Other than getting some of the countertops, they won't have that ready yet because I think those are on backorder. They are working on, very vigorously, working on the flooring issues, getting all of that done. With the carpeting, they got the lab done, I believe, over at the high school. This first floor, they're working on finishing that. What was decided was all of the primary classrooms want to keep that VCT tile with the sinks. So that'll stay in the elementary in the primary grades. I know at this site, the intermediate teachers want to have that removed. They have carpeting all the way through, it works better in those classrooms. That's all up on the second floor. It's a lot of coordination because all of this stuff has to go out into the hallways to make that happen. So they're working on that over these next two weeks. Bathroom remodeling projects are proceeding well. We got a, we caught a break on the middle school one. It did test positive for asbestos in the tile and the flooring. But we are able to basically encapsulate it, go over the top of the existing tile. They'll put a layer over the top and encapsulate it, and put the new tile over the top of that. And it just has to be stated with health and safety processes that it's still there. But that will be fine for 30, 40 years. So that was a big break on that, so they can proceed moving forward with it. So there is a lot going on with the maintenance department. The operations is really doing a lot of work this summer. The principals, two elementary principals, middle school principal, met with title teachers, some of them last week. And they are planning on filling that first grade, I think Margot even sent something out today. Tricia Rux is moving back into the classroom. So we'll be going from five to four people that are doing intervention services. Our title doesn't pay for that many title teachers. We've got to change the format, and they'll be working on that this year. Nobody's going to lose it, nobody's going to lose a job. We're going to do this through Tricia. And when we look at changing how it's delivered, we actually will be increasing the amount of adults working with kids. Because as we go from having a licensed staff in all of those positions, more to a best practice model where you have, in many of the schools, and I know Wayne and I were talking about this with Roseau, you typically have a title teacher with peer professionals that are working with them in the classroom. And that's what you're seeing in, because the money is not there the same way. So we can actually, over the course of time, increase the amount of adults that are working in the title services so that we're not losing title services, we're just changing how we deliver them. So that will be, but again, this year, it's just going from five to four. But as we, as we continue to make the changes over the next two, three years, we'll do it based on attrition as people are retiring from the profession and then putting more people into it. So that's, that's what the plan is with title services. Self-evaluation, our school board self-evaluation. Who has, I think I sent it out back in June. Do you want me to send it out again? And we should just set up, it would be nice if we could, if we could have that done by the retreat, and we could actually have a review about it.
Can you say who hasn't done it?
I don't, see, I don't even know that.
I haven't done it.
I did it.
I did it.
I haven't done it yet. Can you resend it?
I'll resend.
I did the first one we did.
Yeah, I'll resend it. And then if we could plan to get it done within the next week or so, that would give MSBA time to get us the information so that we can have a breakout session at the retreat. It'd be perfect timing. So I'll resend that tonight, yeah. You mean when we go and sign?
I'll remind you.
Remind me.
Okay.
Couple more things. Land transfer. We were hoping that there would be another land transfer. It will not happen. It will not happen this summer. This is from Mark Sloan at Clay County GIS. If you look at the columns that are in hold on the net tax capacity. So the first, the parcel swapped from our school district to Moorhead. The NTC in 2016, at the time that we made this swap, that land had NTC value of 186. Notice that huge jump the following year, up to 467,000. That actually dropped this year down to 454. So with that dropping, because basically land values went down on ag land. And then the other piece is some of the industrial values went down. So at the same time that they went down, notice what's happening, and we knew this was going to be the case, with the residential. So all of those first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth phases, those are all residential properties in Dillon. And of course, the residential took a big hit, an increase in NTC value, in assessed value. Therefore, there's no property that will pick up. In fact, if you look at that second to the last column, the 18, 17 NTC difference, notice, and then the last one, if you compare the change in the initial swap in the middle column that shows the 7,341, that's by statute, we have to be within 10,000 NTC for any property to transfer. As long as it's within 10,000 NTC, we were able to transfer it. So we were able to transfer that second parcel in 2017 because we were, we had a little bit more. We had 7,000 more. Notice this year that it's actually 34,000. Point being, that second would not have even swapped this year because it's more of a disparity. But once it's swapped, it's in law, but it just means it may take a little bit longer. We've got 183,000 NTC difference right now to get the next one to happen. So that's not going to happen until that property or gateway crossing has a tax shift that will take place in 2021. And that's probably the next time we're going to see something now. So it's a little disappointing, would have been nice to have gotten it all the way through to fourth, north of fourth this year. But unless we get a major surprise, I don't see that coming in 2019 either. So for planning purposes, so you know. And this is what Mark does every summer for us.
Is the TIF off?
TIF isn't off yet, that's, thank you. It's the TIF that should come off in 2021. That's when we should see the next change.
So you don't think we'll get any more until then, 2021? Or do you think there's a chance in 2021?
Well, you know, we got 180,000 to pick up.
Right.
You know, there would have to be either some major changes with ag values going back up again, or that TIF has to come off. The TIF could come off sooner than 2021.
Would that occur?
That could occur if they get more in that gateway crossing. If more businesses get in there, then they'll have more NTC. And as soon as they can fill that place up, there's more NTC, and then the TIF comes off.
Got it.
So it's a crapshoot.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, then just last, I've got more to hand out when we get into the action item on the, and I'll give you a language associated with master agreement with the MSEA. But just so you know, the package increase overall ended up being 3.03 for year one, 2.45 year two. Remember, we said it was going to be a two and a half? And so when you add in the steps, that's what it actually comes out. And if you're wondering money-wise, 55,000 the first year for an increase, 46,000 the second year. Is the increase? That's it. Unless you have questions?
Kind of looking for, well, a couple of things I guess I have. One, kind of the grounds and stuff. Is that something in the future, we're going to have to maybe hire more people in the summer?
Yeah.
Ground upkeep? I just, I think, not just myself, but I think quite a few people now have kind of recognized, you know, the grounds could definitely use some attention. And I know it's probably, I realize everybody is doing different things, and there's different tasks that are important.
Scott, I think it'll be, it'll be a perfect time when we get to the retreat to talk about some of that because the operations had a meeting last Wednesday, I think it was. So they, that was one of the topics on there. Because I know they didn't hire as much summer help this year.
It shows, doesn't it?
It shows.
It does.
And with all of the Capitol projects that they're busy working with. And, you know, we let someone go again last week from that department. That was our newest hire. And that person was relieved of duty last week. So that put him shorthanded again. So, yeah, it's, that was definitely one of the topics.
Okay. And then a topic for the retreat too is the title stuff as well. I've had some community members reach out as well, just with concerns.
Well, and I think it's important to get the word out. We're not, remember, people, it's kind of like when we did Special Ed.
It wasn't more of a number, I think it was more of a philosophy, I think, with it. You know, as you look at it, you know, the youngest kids are, the impact that, that elementary, and I don't have to preach to the choir, I sure don't have to preach out to anybody in here, with that impact that that young guy has.
And that, and that's why it's the delivery of it that has changed.
Correct.
That's all.
Yep.
Every other district in the state, I mean, we're in the absolute minority on our delivery system. It's just like Special Ed, when we made the changes with Special Ed a number of years ago. Because our delivery model was not best practice. It's great if we've got all kinds of extra money coming in. But if you have a title program that only has $180,000, you can't continue to spend $400,000 on interventions.
And, you know, I get all that. And my response to that individual too is, school in general is always, you know, a deficit. I mean, let's be, you know, it's just how you spend the money. You know, it's not a profitable business, it's just taxpayer-funded, and, you know, I get that. But it was just a topic that we'll have to, just kind of have a sit-down conversation with.
I think as we, as we continue to go through the year, we'll be getting, one thing that, Margot's taking over the title. She works, I know she had a conversation with the person that is the head of title for the state of Minnesota last week. And so part of the plan moving forward is to get, let's look at best practice in other districts. Because we know other districts are utilizing, are doing title services, but they're doing a different format.
Yeah.
And so we have to, I think, I would hope, I would really hope that that all of our personnel are very professional in how we're delivering this message out to the public. Because if people are hearing that title services are being reduced, that is not a fair statement. fair statement. That is not.
Then I would have to echo what Scott is saying that we would like some clarification.
We need something when people ask us questions.
Step by step with.
Because we do know right now, unless we're hiring, we would be one less person.
So on that retreat, we need to have information.
We'll be one less interventionist.
Yeah. But if it's replaced with para, then that would be even, correct? Or something.
We'll be, we'll have one less interventionist, not title services. Our title services really are only two to three personnel now.
Yeah, that's fine. And all I'm saying is I just, we just want to have a, have a discussion so we don't, I just make sure we're not stealing from Peter.
Let's have that discussion with all the administration team at the table too.
And because we've definitely been having the discussion administratively about it.
Well, I think another concern is it's a federal program. So everybody in this room knows that with federal programs comes federal paperwork. And it's unfortunate when you have to deal with all paperwork. I work in a federal, I work for the federal government and, you know, you spend more time doing paperwork than you do actually seeing people and patients or students. And I think that's a concern and that's maybe something we can talk about as well.
And but but it's, this is a good timing. Before we close on this one, it's important for people to know that there was a different way this was delivered in the past. And I'm not just talking about that we're using our licensed staff. What I'm saying is, when you look at the way the budget was set in the title in the past, there was portions of five different teachers put into that title budget that should never, that does not need to be done. So then that federal paperwork can be down to two people that are actually title teachers. But that was, that was a turf thing. And that's done and we're moving forward with it, to be honest. That'll save at least two of the people that have been doing intervention work paperwork. They won't have any federal paperwork to do because they won't be in the title. They'll be interventionists, but they won't have any paperwork to do title-wise.
Well, I think that's a good discussion to have at the retreat.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
So let's talk about that symbol to the board.
All right. Anything else on your?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Moving on to 10.7 agenda. Total bills. Total bills to be approved at this board meeting, 245,414.92. Our board packet includes also the treasury report, Minnesota local asset account, activities account, resignations for Kathy Madsen, food service, Jennifer Ledbetter, speech, resignation Amanda Jensen, para-professional, all effective July, in July.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.1, basically our long-term facilities maintenance, 10-year plan.
Okay. So here is the update you have. You have four sheets. The first three sheets, and again, we have to do this every year, we talked about this a few weeks ago. The revenue sheets haven't changed, so the first three sheets were all revenue sheets. What I would like you to see, I'm going to have you, on the bottom of the first sheet, so when you're looking at it, it's a line 20D on that first page. At the bottom of that page, on the first sheet, you notice when you get to FY 2027, notice how that dropped from 1 million down to 725,000. The reason for that is that's when the alt facilities project payments with the Johnson Control one, that's when that wraps up. Now, the good news about that is that is a direct effect on levy. So it's not a state aid loss. We're still going to, if you look at then line on the third sheet, line 57, I highlighted that one. Notice that our general fund revenue associated with the long-term facility maintenance is staying the same. Even though we lost that, because basically all that was doing, it was giving the school board levy authority to pay off that alt facility project that goes into the debt service. So all the things that we need to continue to fix, we're not going to see any reduction in money. It's like paying off a mortgage. Mortgage is done, so now you've got your same amount of money that you got to utilize for existing. That's why it dropped from a million, so the levy will drop 200 and some thousand in that year. I discussed with some of you how we can, this is where we can be looking at down the road, some inventive ways with the referendum discussions. How can we possibly put some more money longer term into that to decrease the cost of the bond? Because of some of this money that will be, we're seeing that that reduction that we can fill in then. Okay? The last page, that's the shooting gallery. Basically what happens with this, so we take from that third page that I highlighted on line 56. So what you're approving tonight is the fiscal year 20, 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Because this will then go into 18 payable 19 levy, which affects fiscal '20. So you levy it in the fall, people pay it in 19 calendar year, which affects fiscal '20. It's that two-year process. So it always gets confusing when people are looking at these budgets on this stuff. So if you look on, from that third page, that line 56, you'll notice that what I've loaded in at the bottom of the 10-year annual expenditure dollars is exact totals on what is estimated to be coming in. So that's why you're seeing 725,361 available in revenue. And if you look at the bottom line, when all these things add up, each column is 725,361. And folks, everything on those bottom columns on that last page, when you look at the deferred capital expenditures, these are, these are estimates. It's the reason why we put together that capital expenditure spreadsheet. It's why operations, we ask everybody to put, what are the projects that we need to be looking at in the next five years? Whether it be asphalt, whether it be the roofs. Because then as we start laying it out, that three years from now, let's do this. Then that way, if it happens to be on the roofs, notice that's a 383 code. And then at that time, if it's four years out, I can just simply move 100,000 over to that one from another column. So we always know we have $700,000 available. If we don't spend it, it's a reserved account. It just stays there, which is great because then that'll help us with the bond. So notice this year, we went into the year in the fiscal '19 budget saying we're going to reduce 100,000 between capital and long-term facility maintenance. We're not losing any aid. It's going to sit in reserve as we do our planning with referendum bond. Does that help for a quick, down and dirty summary? So I would ask that you approve that updated plan and then we can get it signed off tonight. And it has to be submitted to this meeting by the 31st.
All right. So looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? A second. Second by Amy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Since this is a resolution, we need to do a roll call. Scott?
Yep.
Bobby?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All those, that is a 5-0. Resolution approved. Moving on to nine. Do you need her to read the resolution? No. All right. 9.2, reauthorization of board approval of government authority. Can you review that one?
I need you on two.
I can do it if you need me to.
Sounds good.
Yeah?
Yeah, that one we should.
Resolution reauthorizing a previously authorized border-proof referendum authority, whereas a regularly scheduled meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 2164 was held at the DGF Middle School Media Center, Dilworth, at 6:00 PM, July 23, 2018. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 2164, Dilworth, Glenwood, Felton, as follows. The board has previously authorized a board-approved referendum authority in the amount of $300 per adjusted pupil unit pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 126(c)(17) sub.9a. That authority expires after taxes payable in 2018. The board hereby reauthorizes that authority for five years, beginning with taxes payable in 2019. The board may subsequently reauthorize the board-approved referendum authority in increments of up to five years. The clerk is authorized and directed to submit a copy of the adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as reasonably practicable after its adoption, but in no event later than September 30, 2018.
Looking for a motion to approve that resolution for that referendum authority.
So moved.
Is that Bobby?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Again, this is a resolution, so Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes? Lindsay?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
I can record show 5-0. Resolution passes. Moving on to 9.3, under policies. Again, Lindsay had kind of shared with the report during committees that these were the first readings of these policies, 102, 205, 206, 211, 303, 401, 404, 405, and 406. Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.4, this is the master agreement. Brian had already preressed the amount totally. Look at any of the red sections on that, that would be the changes, any of the red line? Maybe you can point it out on that?
Yeah, so, so this had been presented to the negotiations committee. So I worked with Greg from MSEA on using a common document, things that were in the black in the bold he had put in. And then the things in the red were some of those corrections that we'd noticed and that we continued to work on for about a week. So this is everything that we went through from negotiations. It's nice to just have a summary instead of trying to go through the 40, 50 pages and send out, kill trees again. So you can see the two pages have everything. We also removed what's needed to happen after the Janus decision. So on the second page, at the bottom of the second page, number 11, that is a change that was understood that it had to happen. It wasn't discussed in negotiations, but we knew it would have to happen.
Yeah, but just requirements.
Yep. Fair share is out. And then the third page is simply the schedule. And the reason that there's some variations on the amounts, not just the steps themselves, but we still have in the contract that once people hit like 15 years and 20 years, they've got some of those quarter 50 cent increases and such. And so you get some variability with that. And they have ratified that, so it's just up to the board now. So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. 9.5, the summer ECSE contract for Rebecca Donahue for $35 an hour, not to exceed 37 hours.
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 10.1, the certified contract for Rochelle Dingman, Dingman, .6 FTE occupational therapy at the effect of this coming school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Where does she come to us from? I'm sorry.
Ask Mariana because I'm not sure of that.
Okay. I do see that she's coming to step seven, so I'm just wondering where she.
And this is the first, because just so you, everybody understands, we've done contracted services for OT before through Morehead. So what happened was Morehead needed, they could no longer give us those services, so we had to advertise for it separate. But I, I couldn't tell you up there on which school district she was at.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 11.1, as I already said, when our leadership cabinet retreat is coming up, operations will be Monday, the 13th, at 5:00 at the high school out in Glendon, followed by the board meeting, also out in Glendon at 6:00. Again, if a committee prior to a board meeting will be canceled, we will be sending that out to the whole entire district. Once again, I want to apologize for that. So learning curve on things, so it won't happen again. So thank you very much.
A reminder that the 20th, the 27th meeting, as a reminder to everyone, the following meeting is not on the 27th, which it was originally. We moved that up to the 20th. The second meeting in August.
Okay.
We took board action on that a couple of meetings ago. But just a reminder for people, it's updated on the website showing that it's now the 20th. But if people had an old sheet showing the 27th, don't come on the 27th.
Right. And we'll also have that at the meeting, the next meeting.
Are there any committee meetings prior to that one?
Did you want to get a policy meeting in?
I think when we hit the.
Or after the retreat?
After the retreat.
Okay.
We can, we can figure that one out.
Okay. Anything else? Meeting is adjourned.